Let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order. Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, December 21st, 7:00 PM. Let's please stand for a prayer from Mrs. Lefley.
You may have noticed that it's almost Christmas. So I'm going to share one of my favorite Christmas prayers with you. We know that God is always present. Let us bring ourselves into an awareness of that presence that we might pray together. Let us pray. When the fullness of time had come, God sent His Son, born of a woman, under the law in order to redeem all of us so that we might receive adoption as God's children. So we are no longer slaves but children and heirs of God. Holy wisdom, you fill us with goodness and we are grateful. Let us show that gratitude with our lives. Holy wisdom, you invite us to serve and we answered yes. Let us show with our actions. Holy wisdom, you open our eyes to those in need and we want to be faithful. Let us show that with our love. Holy wisdom, we want to live more deeply in your peace. Show us the way. Oh, come, all ye faithful, come, let us adore Him. Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
President.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Lefley.
Here.
Mr. Simpson.
Here.
Here.
Move to excuse Commissioner Turner.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Communications, I need a motion to receive and file the 2017 end quarter report by Davis Curtsey Associates and the Marine City Rotary Club.
Make a motion that we file the communications as just reported.
Support.
The only thing I have for this, though, is we actually, the acceptance by the Rotary to let them put something in, it's ultimately up to us. If you adopt a park, I don't see why we need someone's permission to put something in or out.
I took that as just a general letter of support for the project.
No, I had heard that there was a group that didn't want it in the other park. But, you know, and I appreciate all the people that do adopt these parks, but, yes, they do have to understand that the ultimate decision is here, that's just to maintain the park.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address and please limit your comments to five minutes.
My name is Louise Gibbs and we have property at 218 South Water Street, Roasted. As you all know, we own the South Water Street properties. The only thing, the reason my husband and I are here tonight, we were really disappointed in the way the roads were taken care of last weekend. Concerned for, not only, and I know, Mr. Mayor, that you've been addressed by this, but not only for our patrons but our employees, the business owners. People come from all over, you know, out of town to come into our city and, you know, we pay a lot of tax money and, really, it was inappropriate and we really would appreciate it if someone could address this and have the roads up to the curbs, you know, cleaned out so that we're not stepping in two foot of snow. I think that we, as business owners, my husband and I, keep our sidewalks totally clear so that we don't have that problem. I have an elderly lady that lives in our apartment on the back part of our property. Plus, I have two little ones with their mom and dad upstairs, not to mention all the elder, elderly people that come in there. So if somebody could take care of that situation, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moran.
Sorry, Dave. Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. Marine City said farewell to a good friend this afternoon. And when I returned home from that, out of my mailbox, I pulled the weekly edition of The Voice and the lead headline was about the commission turning down or delaying the implementation of the skating rink downtown. In Gary's memory, I want to bring forward with the coming new year to this body, one of Gary's core beliefs was that success comes in cans, not can'ts. And that when a task is anticipated, the idea is not to think about ways or reasons why it can't be done, but to find ways that it can be done. And I hope moving forward into the new year, both in Gary's spirit and for the good and well-being of all of Marine City, that those of us that do serve on boards and as administrators do find ways to accomplish things that, on the surface, would seem to be difficult if not impossible. We have a shining example of how that can be done. Thank you.
Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
We move to approve the agenda as presented.
Any corrections or deletions or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Need approval of the previous regular meeting on December 7th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes from the regular City Commission meeting, December 17th, 2017.
At the point of order, we've added a correction. Do we include that in our, in the motion? Or does that come through disbursements? Is that out of the minutes, right?
I don't have that.
Corrected from Bill's name to mine name in the yellow. That was the correction.
Sorry, amend mine to, as amended.
Support.
Any other corrections or deletions to the minute? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the Zone Board of Appeals Minutes, November 1st, the Planning Commission Minutes, November 13th, Department Activity Reports, and the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report and Agenda Packet.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Any questions on the consent agenda?
Just a quick one. Elaine, on your report, this isn't all our items, is it? Because you're missing the one on the payouts and the personnel policies and procedures.
Yeah, there's been some other ones that have been missed, too.
Yeah, I moved some of the stuff around miscellaneous. I really missed that.
I just want to make sure we double them all captured.
Hearing none, any more questions or concerns on it? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to the 2016-2017 audit presentation by McBride, Manley &amp; Company.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis McBride. I'm a CPA for McBride, Manley &amp; Company. We are the CPA firm that audits the City Marine City books and records and we are here this evening to present the results of our June 30, 2017 audit. I am the managing partner for our firm. I've been with our firm for just over 17 years. I'm also the Director of Governmental Accounting and Auditing at our firm. I've been involved with the city's audit since day one, since I started, just over 17 years ago. With me this evening is Samantha Hudson. She is a, she's an audit manager at our firm and she's been with us for almost nine years now, I believe. And she's, she's really my right hand, you know, when it comes to the City and Marine City's audit and actually a lot of things in our office, if I'm being honest with you. Before we get into the slides, I want to talk about our audit opinion first. Now, there are three types of opinions you can receive from your auditor. There is what we call a clean or unmodified audit opinion, which means that we believe your financial records are reliable and they're in compliance with our standards. Then there's what we call a modified audit opinion, which means that, for the most part, we think they are reliable, but there may be a few exceptions to that. And then the third type of opinion is what we call an adverse audit opinion, which means we do not think they are reliable and they're not in accordance with our standards. So before we get into the numbers, I am pleased to announce that the City and Marine City did receive a clean or unmodified audit opinion from our firm, which is the highest opinion you can receive from your auditor. And I just want to clarify, that just simply means we believe that the financial statements are accurate and they're in compliance with our standards. We are not providing any type of opinion on the financial health of the city. That's not the primary focus of our audit. So with that, I'm actually going to turn over the numbers part of the presentation to Samantha.
I'll let it get started. We're going to talk about the general fund. What I do want to remind everybody is our general fund, for financial statement purposes, includes the capital projects fund. So when we're discussing general fund throughout the slides, that actually means the general fund, as you're used to referring it to, and your capital projects fund together. That's because our professional standards require those two funds to be consolidated together. That's why it occurs that way in the financial statements. At the end of 2017, the general fund ended the year with total assets of about 1.7 million. The majority of that was in cash of about 1.3 million and it had total liabilities of about 284,000 and ended the year with fund balance of about 1.4 million. The next slide, we are showing a summarized version of how the city receives its funds and spends its money during the year. We're also comparing that 2016 to kind of give you an idea of how you did comparison to last year. For 2017, the general fund had about 3 billion in total revenues. The majority of that is from your property tax revenues, about 1.5 million. The outlier that happened between '17 and '16, you can see, had about a $300,000 increase. That's due to the grant proceeds from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the Brownfield Plan and the related loan proceeds. If you take those out, then your revenues are pretty consistent with last year. On the expenditures, the general fund had about 2.8 million in total expenditures. On a related note, too, you can see the biggest jump in increase was in the community and economic development category, where you went from about 3,000 to 406,000. And that was also all the expenses related to that grant and loan from the MDEQ for the Brownfield Plan, which is, again, all offset by those revenues, so it actually kind of is a wash. At the end of 2017, the general fund increased its fund balance by about 289,000 and your total fund balance was about 1.4 million. The state recommends your minimum fund balance be about 10% of your total annual expenditures. At the end of 2017, the cities was about 43%, which is higher than that, but we don't believe that that's an excessive number. And we'll kind of get into that a little bit more. There's a couple of slides later, we do a revenue trend. You can kind of see why being over that 10% is a really good idea for most cities to be at because you need to be able to anticipate unexpected revenue streams or revenues that are kind of tied to something that isn't very steady. In the next slide, we're presenting the total revenues between '16 and '17 and we're showing them as a percentage. So you can see that the majority of your tax revenues are, your revenues are actually tax, property taxes, which is about 1.5 million as of '16 and '17. And again, your biggest kind of change in the percentage computations is due to the DEQ loan that you had. If you kind of take that out, your percentages look a lot even between '16 and '17. And the next slide, you're, we presented your total expenditures broken out by kind of category. So you can see we've kind of split everything out into salaries and payroll and different items like that to kind of give you more of an idea of how the city spends its funds versus the department levels. And again, we're comparing, comparing that from 2016 to 2017. The majority of the change was, again, related to the Brownfield cleanup, which was the funds you had to expend as part of that DEQ loan for the Brownfield Plan. So again, that almost 400,000 of expenses were totally offset by related revenues. And that was pretty much the biggest outlier there. I think if I remember doing our analysis, if you took that, those expenses out, everything was kind of in line with 2016, so it was kind of very similar. And that was basically the biggest change that you had. The next slide is actually kind of a new one for us this year. We kind of thought it was interesting, so we went back 10 years and looked at the city's revenues. And our biggest focus was on the property tax revenue. Because as you saw, it takes about 50% of the general funds, funds. From 2008 to 2017, the general fund actually lost 532,000 over 10 years and you still haven't recovered. And that's also kind of gets back to why having a healthy fund balance is so important because if the city was maintaining that state minimum of 10% over those 10 years, the city would have been struggling to keep at 10%. So you always want to be above that so that way you can be able to weather kind of a storm where, you know, your property tax revenues decreased over $100,000 in one year or more. Another side note on the property tax revenues, you know, it's very fortunate that the local economy has been doing better, but your property tax revenues are actually going to grow a lot slower and that's because the state of Michigan has caps on the growth of property taxes. So it's on per property, so each property can only grow by a certain percentage, and it's also capped on the city as a whole. So you kind of get hit in two aspects where your property tax revenues are likely to take time to slowly recover from that $500,000 loss. The next slide, we've gone back over 10 years and shown your fund balance. Over that same period, the general fund has actually increased its fund balance. Most of that has happened in the last couple of years through budgeting decisions. And again, you know, we wanted to point that out because even though your primary revenue source has dropped $500,000, the City Commission has taken action and budgeted appropriately to be able to keep a healthy fund balance, to be able to fund its services and be able to actually provide the needed support to the residents. The next two funds we're going to talk about are the major and local street funds. These two funds are different from the general fund in the fact that they're what we call special revenue funds. So these funds are restricted for a specific purpose, and in this case, for major and local street improvements. Which also means that those revenues and those assets cannot be used to fund general obligations of the general fund. You can't take those funds out and use it for something else. They're restricted and have to be used for street projects and related expenditures. At the end of 2017, the local street fund had total assets of 273,000. The majority of that was in cash. It had about 5,000 in liabilities and ended the year with a fund balance of 268,000. The major street fund had total assets of about 500,000. Like the local street fund, its majority of its assets are in cash. It had liabilities of about 18,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of about 487,000. On the next slide, we presented the revenues and expenditures of both funds. Both the major and local street fund receive, basically, their only funds are from the state of Michigan, which is your F-51 funds that are restricted specifically for major and local streets. The local street fund had about 103,000 in total expenditures and actually increased its fund balance by about 53,000 and ended the year, again, with a fund balance of 600 and, or, sorry, 268,000. The state of Michigan has no recommended fund balance level for special revenue funds and that's because these funds are meant to be spent on that purpose. Your fund balance is actually in excess of 100% of the total annual expenditures, but that's expected. These funds are expected to basically increase and decrease based off of what kind of projects you have. So in a year where you don't have significant street projects, its fund balance is going to increase until a year where you have a really big project and then it's going to sharply go down and then it'll build back up again over time for the next project and continue going that way. So that's why those funds are, they're very volatile and they're expected to fluctuate year to year. The major street fund had about 248,000 in total revenues. It had total expenditures of about 66,000 and ended the year with an increase in fund balance of 122,000. And like the local street fund, its ending fund balance was over 100% of its total expenditures, but again, it's kind of expected because there was no planned major project in 2017. I think the last major project the both funds had was a couple of years ago for the bridge project. And then you spent a whole bunch of funds there, really decreased that fund balance and now it's building back up again for the future projects that are going to be coming up in the next couple of years. The last fund I'm going to talk about is the water and sewer fund. This fund's different from the other three in the fact that it's an enterprise fund. So the difference between the water and sewer fund versus the general fund and the major and local street funds is that it's meant to be supported by user charges and fees. You can see that the statements look a little bit different in some of the way that its assets are made up. For instance, the major local street, sorry, the water and sewer fund had total assets of 7.3 million. Unlike the major and local street funds and the general fund where the majority of the assets were cash, the water and sewer fund's majority of the assets are tied up in capital assets, which was about 5.7 million. And that's actually the water and sewer plant themselves, the lines, the equipment, and all those related expenses there, which is basically what the purpose of that fund is. You had total liabilities of about 2 million and ended the year with a net position of 5.3 million. And again, the majority of that net position is held up in non-cash assets, which is all your capital assets. It only had about 500,000 available to be spent on operations for next year. The last one, we have the, basically, the income statement for the water and sewer fund. During 2017, it generated total revenues of about 1.7 million. It had total expenditures of about 1.8 million and had some other non recurring revenues of about 338,000. There was also a grant that was received in 2017, that was the end of the SAW grant, where you received just over 300,000 for the, determining the aging and the makeup of your water and sewer system to be able to determine what needs to be improved on it for future years. And at the end of 2017, you increased your fund net position of about 494,000 and ended with your fund balance of about 5.3, which, again, the majority of that is tied up in those capital assets that you can't use to pay for future stuff. It's really only the 500,000 that's remaining, it's basically cash and receivables.
Could you mention the amount of depreciation expense so that we understand that really wasn't 155,000 that's made up of depreciation?
Yes. In the operating expenses, the way that our professional standards are required with your capital assets that you have, that 5.7 million, you actually depreciate that over time. So those were actually expenses that related to a future for prior periods. During the year, the water and sewer fund had about 500,000 in total depreciation. So if you took that out of your operating expenses, the water and sewer fund actually had an operating surplus versus a loss. So it doesn't, it, it's a little bit misleading, like Mary Ellen kind of indicated, that the operating loss looks bad, but it's basically driven by that depreciation of old assets that are being recovered over time. And I'm going to turn you over to Curtis, who is going to talk a little bit about the OPEB and wrap up our presentation.
Thank you. Just to summarize a little bit what Samantha had talked about, in our opinion, you do have solid fund balance levels in all your major funds. However, also as Samantha had mentioned, we do not feel they are excessive by any stretch. We talked about the major local streets. They have healthy fund balances, but over the next couple of years, you do have significant street projects planned where you're going to use those fund balances in those two funds. Also, in the, in the water and sewer funds, we know that we have a significant portion of that, of your equity tied up in those capital assets. And as Samantha had mentioned, those are the portion of your, of your net assets that are not available for spending. They're not liquid. So you, you know, you can't, you can't write a check with capital, you know, capital improvements. So most of, the majority of your equity in your water and sewer is what we call non-liquid. And then the, the general fund, you have been doing a really good job at maintaining your fund balance and building it up over the last couple of years, and that's going to be very important. And as Samantha had mentioned, you need to do that to plan for future events. You know, whether you're going to have a severe decline in, in revenue streams one year or one thing that I, that we know is coming down the stream, and this is kind of a good segue into the retirees' healthcare, there is some legislation coming at the state level related to pensions and retirees' healthcare. It's not law at this point, but we know they're going to do something. And it's going to address underfunded pension and retiree healthcare obligations. Now, you, the way they're going to define what underfunded means, you know, under their definitions, you're going to be okay in your pension fund because you're more than, they're going to consider you underfunded if you're, if you're less than 60% funded, but you're more than 70% funded in your pension. So under their definition, you're not going to be underfunded. But retirees' healthcare is another situation. You currently, as of the most current valuation, which was done in 2015, you're only required to have a retirees' healthcare valuation every three years. So you'll have another one coming next year. But as of the most recent valuation, you had about an $8.9 million unfunded retirees' health, healthcare liability, or about a 2% funded ratio. So under what's, what we think is going to come out in legislation, under their definition, you're going to be considered underfunded and they're going to start requiring you to do some, some things to try to remedy that situation. And likely, it's probably going to require the use of some general fund balance. So that's another reason why it's very important for you to stay over that state minimum level of 10% of annual expenditures. Now, the next couple of slides, I just, we're going to really briefly discuss what we do throughout the year as part of our audit. So our audit is performing all the major accounting functions. So this would include purchases, cash receipts, utility billing, journal entries and payroll. So for purchasing, we're actually pulling samples of invoices. We're making sure that, you know, any, any purchases made by the city are allowed under state law and they're appropriate. You know, we're making sure that, you know, the city isn't paying for personal expenses of anyone. We're making sure they're being approved by someone at the management level, making sure they're also being approved at the council level. For cash receipts, we're making sure that nothing happens to cash from the time it gets to the, the city office and the time it gets to the bank. We're making sure it gets to the bank. For utility billing, we're making sure that, that the residents are being charged the appropriate rates that have been approved. We're making sure that they're being, they're being charged for the correct consumption, the correct usage. Payroll's a big one. We're making sure that employees are being paid for time, actually, that they're actually working at the correct pay rates that have been approved. And another important thing is we're also making sure that the payroll taxes associated with that payroll has been paid. And of course, we, we perform year-end reconciliations to put together that 72-page report that you have bound in front of you. And of course, throughout the year, we're, we're in contact with the city, primarily Mary, Mary Ellen. And that's, and that's really a great relationship to have and I know with, with Lisa, I probably sound like a broken record, I had the same comment to the fire department, Fire Authority last week, but that's a great relationship to have because... relationship to have because it really helps us identify things throughout the year. You know, not that you have issues, but it helps us understand what's going on. And as I mentioned before, you know, there's nothing worse as an auditor coming in after the year is over and discovering issues or problems at that point. So that really allows us to head off any, any major issues throughout the year. So overall, I, I think it was a, a good audit process. I do want to mention, our, our audit was delayed, our report was delayed because we did not receive information from your actuary really until, I want to say the, it was the second week in December. So we were, we really had to scramble as a result of that. So I just wanted to disclose that to, to you. That's all I have. Do we have any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
I was just going to ask.
Yes.
Why was the actuary report late, do you know?
Between Curtis and myself, and I even got Elaine involved, the actuarial, I think, my, this is my opinion, has too much on her plate and she can't handle the job workflow that she has. And as a result, I mean, they provided the information to them in September, and we didn't get it till December. And it shouldn't take that long. And when I did my, for the actuarial that we do for the pension and stuff, I gave them information the end of December. I didn't get my report till April. It's taking them way too long. I mean, Elaine and I have discussed this. Basically, there's, and we've talked to Curtis, there's basically two firms in the state of Michigan that primarily is actuarial services. One is Gabor Roder, which is who we were with before. And then we went with Rodman Consulting, and the reason is, is that her fee was like fifty percent less than what we were paying. They were trying to, you know, save some money for the pension and the retiree healthcare plan. But in the meantime, I mean, she does fabulous work, and it's all accurate and everything, but it just takes too long. So we are in discussion. I think it's going to be too late to do anything, but it's something that we need to, you know, for the year ending in of eighteen, or excuse me, seventeen reports, because that's when I'm going to have to start giving her this information. But I would like possibly to see a change for eighteen, because it's not only putting pressure on me, it puts pressure on them as well. And, and I don't want to see that happening.
Thank you. For those of us who are not in the accounting business, yeah, you know, so I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Moving on to board appointments, we have received basically bare minimum of what we needed. We could use a few more, but this is what we have. The zoning board of appeals, we have two vacancies with two alternate vacancies. I will need a motion for an appointment to this board. And you guys can see who's listed there. I think they're just renewals.
The first one is a new appointment, and the second one is a reappointment.
Okay.
And the one you just handed us?
For Eric Cottrell, that, that would be?
Yeah, that was past the deadline, but we thought, I thought maybe we'd reconsider it as?
As an alternate?
Can I get a motion?
Yeah. I'll, I'll move that we accept the applications of Cheryl Verkhammon and Mark Basham for the zoning board of appeals and Eric Cottrell as an alternate.
Support.
Don't we usually do these individually?
We usually do.
Can we use the board, the board individually, or do we have to do individual first?
Names.
I, I don't seem to be on, could we do it one motion?
We only have the three, and we're going to pick all three.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that if we have to.
Usually, yes, we do individual if.
We have more than one to pick from?
Not usually.
In this case.
I just want to make sure we're doing the right.
We got a motion and a support. Correct? Can we support it? Okay. Is this roll call vote, or is this, you know, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we're moving on to the border review, which we have one vacancy and one alternate vacancy. And I need a motion by someone on the board for Dan Micoff.
I move to appoint Dan Micoff to the vacancy of, on border review.
Support.
Anyone any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I know he's Santa Claus.
Carried. Then we're moving down to the historical commission, and I'd like to nominate William Boutel and Susan Jenkins, and that's just a renewal, correct?
Yeah, the three appointments, yes.
Support?
Yep.
You want me to?
Nope, I, I have to nominate that one, yeah. So we got a motion and support. Any questions or concerns on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Then Tifa board, we have one vacancy, finish out term expiring six twenty-one, and I'd like to appoint Charles Signeri.
Support.
And he's the only one we had for that one also. And you support it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on Charles?
Oh, we're just thankful he voted.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And I'd like to also appoint Brian Ross to the planning commission. We have one vacancy and the term expiring six two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Any questions on Brian Ross? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to financial business dispersments, including payroll for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move to approve dispersments, including payroll, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on the dispersments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right, moving on to preliminary financial statement. I would like, if I could get a motion to receive and file, please.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. City manager's report.
I'd like to announce that the master plan public hearing has been scheduled at the planning commission, January eighth, at seven P.M. I think I might have misspoke myself at a previous meeting when I said that it would be back here. Things are a little different here than what I'm used to, so it's actually at planning commission, and ultimate approval will be there. So, January eighth, seven P.M., planning commission. I met with the DEQ, MEDC, and MSHDA this week to talk about some of the options that they have for any type of funding or grants or anything, and also programs for housing in the community, just doing a study and looking at what kind of housing we have in the community, internal analysis. I attended a Tifa meeting, and I would just like to say, I personally will miss Gary Coes, and I would just like to extend my condolences to his friends and family. And that's it.
Any questions for the city manager? I have one. We did, I just wanted to, we did talk to Mike Hittrich, we had a meeting with him about city.
About the plowing, yes.
And the miscommunication on what needed to be done.
Yeah, he unfortunately was out of town and had someone else that was taking charge over the weekend, and unfortunately, he did make a bad call. He didn't think that the roads necessitated the need to bring in more people. We, we have talked about it and circumstances, and we're putting means in place to hopefully not have the problem again.
And also notification for their staff, too, on, we did talk about that.
Correct.
With the PD and other notification systems.
And, and really, more calls are better than no calls. Not getting a call from the police department or fire department or anyone, or getting out and plowing the roads could be a problem because obviously, some of these people live out of town and they don't know the exact circumstances in Marine City. So it's better for them to get maybe a couple of calls from police and, and fire than no
Anyone else have anything else for the city manager? Hearing none, let's move to commissioner privilege. Mr. Avery, if you'd like to start us out.
I will. Obviously, it is important, we'll probably all want to honor Gary for what he did for the city and the individuals here. I'm sure we're all also respectful for his family situation as opposed to our interest in what he did for the city. It will be a great loss for everybody concerned. That hopefully, we'll be able to make some of this gap in the activity level that he brought to the city. We'll need people to come in and volunteer. It's going to be pretty hard to find a person to be able to do that. And the second item, we have a blight, mess in the city that occurs every week. This material is thrown down onto driveways, onto property, onto the parkway. There's areas where there's five and six of them, various stages of decay laying around. I really would hope that we could get together and enforce our ordinance on trash thrown out, because that's what this is. Even if it goes far enough to look and say, well, it's done by a bunch of different people. That sort of makes it, to a non-lawyer, sound like a recall situation, where we have a bunch of people acting in consort to commit a crime. I would like to bring up on the agenda at some point here, some way to solve this problem.
Okay. Commissioner? I actually do have someone in the office that's working on contacting the right person that I believe it's Times Herald, who are the people that distribute those. So we've already got the wheels of motion working on, on this, and, and if it is something that we do need to bring here and discuss, we'll certainly get that on the agenda.
Thank you very much for mentioning that, because I have talked with you about that, and you've responded on that already, so thank you. That's it.
I'd just like to thank everybody that volunteered and, and served the city this year as we wind up two thousand seventeen. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and also sympathy to the family and friends of Gary Coes. His enthusiasm will be greatly missed.
I guess to repeat it, I worked along with the mayor and Gary on the pumpkin thing, and just the enthusiasm and the greatness of it. Bill, I'll miss him.
Yeah, I had my condolences to Laura and the family and friends that Gary Coes leaves behind. I think it's often said in situations that sometimes people don't step up because they feel like there's not a void or a vacancy. So I think this would be an excellent time, and it's a very large vacancy for anyone that wishes to step up and, and do good things and make things happen in, in many different ways. So I think that might be a way to potentially honor the legacy of, of someone who did right by so many and by, by this city, is to, you know, step up and start to make things happen. You know, if someone's out there interested in, in getting involved, I would encourage you to maybe make, make this your opportunity, maybe make this your tipping point of, you know, making a few calls and seeing what, what it is that you can do to, you know, do something to improve, improve the city, improve, you know, the area around you, improve a civic group, anything, any number of things. I think that would be a great way to, you know, honor him. And I just also want to, you know, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year. Keep in mind, a lot of people have a hard time around this time of year, and, you know, if you can take an opportunity to reach out to a neighbor or a friend, those are always especially nice things to consider this time around. We usually associate Christmas with happy things. Oftentimes, a lot of people don't have a whole lot of positive associations with that, so if you can keep that in mind, too, I think that makes the world a better place.
I'm going to offer my same thing, condolences to Laura and her family, too, for, for the loss of Gary. I got a few other things. I think we talked about that once before. During the summer, we had another issue where they dumped them all over town, and I know you took care of that one. The snow plowing, and then I also had a lot of complaints, and I know I sent you a note, and it was covered in there. We have to kind of watch the sidewalks so long, park, there are a lot of the people that have to still walk and navigate. It was pretty tough. I saw people in the street trying to get down towards Kmart and that, because there's a few big vacant sections that just don't get done for them. So if we can take care of that. I noticed that the state looks like they're going to offer money again for the water monitoring system, and I want to make sure, I know they haven't decided how much each community's going to get, and I know that's a cost on our water bill, and I know we've talked about that before, so it sounds like that's going to be a comeback issue for us to see if, if they give us enough money. Hopefully, we can drop that. You know, I know we talked about it before. And I want to thank everybody for all the donations and the support for the Marine City Old Newsboys. We're making progress. We're a little late this year, but we're getting there. We have a lot of kids that we're servicing this year, and our date's fast approaching to delivery on Sunday, but we really, really appreciate all the support, all the toys, the hats and gloves, everything that this community and the surrounding communities donate to that group to, to make this happen for all those kids. And so lastly, I just want to give everybody a Merry Christmas and have a safe and happy New Year.
All right. Yep, we had a, it was a rough week. I lost a friend of mine. I described him as Marine City's P.T. And as Dave and everyone stated, the show must go on. And it's all about service. Gary's served the community. And we just need to keep this momentum going. We have a beautiful, beautiful town and a beautiful community, and it's not buildings, it's people. We have wonderful people here, and we have a lot of people that want to do a lot for this community. We just need, they need sometimes motivation, sometimes they just need ideas. So if you guys come up with some ideas, we'll work with you. I want to close on one note. And this is from P.T. Barnum also. And I think Gary would appreciate it. Without promotion, something terrible will happen. Nothing. And I want to call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One second.